Um, as you all know, we're struggling right now to um address our bus driver shortage and our bus driver situation with substitutes. So we're trying to put some money there for um incentives for staff to take CDL trips, or drive for trips that require CDL, perhaps incentives for not taking sick leave. Uh, we're just trying to address that issue. We're continuing to evaluate that. Um, we thought about offering sign-on bonuses for staff and then incentives for employees that were staff. So we thought about adding some two shuttle, two full-time shuttle drivers. Those are things that right now we're considering with the budget that we have. Um, don't know if we'll be able to do those things. Another significant issue that we have is, remember last year we increased our minimum wage to thirteen fifty? The minimum wage in Virginia in January of twenty twenty-five is going to go to thirteen fifty. In January of twenty twenty-six, it's projected to go to fifteen dollars. So right now we're at thirteen fifty. Um, when we did that, we got positions like, people in our maintenance department, we have three classes of maintenance positions. We have maintenance skilled, maintenance journeyman, and maintenance foreman, correct? Currently, we have two maintenance skilled positions vacant. We're having extremely hard time filling those because our step zero is not in competition with surrounding places. Most of our, fortunately, most of those positions that we have in all three categories are way up in the scale, you know, let's say step twenty-five or higher. So those jobs have been here long enough that it's an attractive salary, but it's not attractive for someone coming in at step zero. But if we were to adjust the scale, obviously, the scale would be adjusted and those people that have been here long term would get increases as well. So it could be costly simply because of the situation that we have. But we also need to fill those positions and we have not been able to fill them so far. So that's something we're looking at, trying to address that.
You also have to think we're probably, we have the most strict background checks and all of that stuff compared to all the rest of them. Paper mills now hiring people that they had fired in the past. It's crazy.
The shortages put in strength on the people that are left that have worked around this short age.
Absolutely. And they're, I mean, they're critical positions. I mean, mechanics are, but the skilled position.
And that's what we're talking about, mechanic?
The two basically that we have right now are mechanics.
Here a couple of mechanics. I have one mechanic out there.
Which is your pay for that?
Hmm?
Which is step zero pay for that?
Twenty-nine something. That's compared to like thirty-two, thirty-one, thirty-two, no.
Oh, twenty-nine down the road.
Yeah.
And what is the, I wonder what the county's is?
It's less, it is more than what we.
It's more because, because we lost people to the county.
Yes.
I wonder what the city's is. It'd be interesting to hear what both of them pay.
I think, I think we're talking about, you know, ours is like fourteen dollars an hour. I think theirs is more like sixteen, seventeen.
So we're paying them fifty cents more than the minimum base rate of a mechanic?
Well, it's a little bit, it's about fourteen, seventeen, I think so. It's higher than that. Pardon?
It's twelve dollars in a week now, right?
No, it's thirteen fifty.
Now, not now?
No, not, in Virginia, it's gonna go to thirteen fifty in July, in January of twenty twenty-five.
Did it pass?
Yes. But it'll, it'll take further legislation to increase it in twenty twenty-six. But yeah, we're, it's twelve right now and we're at thirteen hours, is it thirteen fifty? We don't have any positions that are less than thirteen fifty.
I'm just going to do the budget. We thought about the thirteen fifty, because it's all about going up, that's why we're getting.
That's exactly why we did that. That's exactly why we did that.
Any empty positions that we have now, like other positions?
Um, we probably have, just had our intent forms come out, so that's been helpful. I'm uh excavating anywhere between five to ten certified teaching positions. Uh, and then on top of that, we've probably, counting our bus drivers, we're six short right now with bus drivers. You've heard of, already have a couple of mechanics, we have at least three plus an additional looking for custodial position. So we were short a couple, then there's a request for, so we're looking at about fifteen classified um positions right now, which, or note is, is we are in a better position than we were a year ago. Even with the um, the mortgage of staff, we have less positions right now, today. That's subject to change, of course.
Yes, we have less positions. We've saved considerable money in our budget.
And less, and less actual vacancies, like less actual openings, correct? Making sure I understand.
Correct.
So in addition to kind of that coming together, yeah, we've just, we've been able to retain our recruit staff over and on. Yeah.
Yeah, just like in our mechanics, it's like, we only have one, it's only gonna be one person's salary going up.
But you can't just adjust those mechanics and not adjust your other maintenance positions. Because that's actually, we put them two.
Maybe there's zero step, right?
Well, if you, if you adjust that.
Does a custodian get paid the same amount as a mechanic?
Well, the custodian's start at thirteen fifty. But if you adjust step zero, all the steps are gonna adjust.
Yeah.
And if you adjust the maintenance skilled, you would also want to adjust the maintenance journeyman and the maintenance foreman, because otherwise they would be too close together.
What, no, you call a mechanic maintenance skilled?
A mechanic is maintenance skilled.
And then you have, so you have maintenance skilled, you have journeyman.
And then foreman.
Have we ever looked at how we rank in pay in comparable communities?
I've looked at that. I've looked at that. I've tried to look at other localities that are similar in size, student-wise, and similar in local composite index. Um, and then I've tried to look at surrounding ones, in Bautista, places like that.
So how do we stack up?
Um, depends on what position. In teachers, I think we stack up very well. In bus drivers, I think we stack up very well. In maintenance, not so well. So it's just, it depends on the position.
How many steps are there in the maintenance skilled position?
All, all positions have three steps. And there's one point three nine percent increase between steps. Bus drivers are not on scale. Um, they get.
What else is on scale? Is that the other position?
Um, superintendents are on scale, um, we have other positions, I think. There's one more.
And there's certainly also lots of hourly work that might happen, right, that's not on scale.
Right, right.
Like the tutors, that kind of.
Students, drivers, teachers, they're all miscellaneous rates, that's basically thirteen fifty or fifteen dollars depending on the trip.
So, so why are our bus drivers not on scale? I've, I've, I've heard people talk in the past about seniority, you know, they get to choose routes and things like that, but obviously what we're doing just isn't working.
We, we always, typically what happens is, what happened last year is, you know, we got, teachers got a seven percent increase. We took the average of all increases, which I think was eight point one two, and then bus drivers get that percentage. That, that's applied to whatever their base salary is. So it's not that they don't get increases, they just don't get.
They, well, they just don't, they just don't get longevity pay.
They don't get.
And that, and maybe that's why they, I mean, that's, that is an incentive. For me, it was.
They're getting a salary increase.
No, but if, I've been driving a bus for ten years and Marie starts driving her first year and we're both getting paid the same, I'm like, eh, I feel like I should get some sort of benefit from being there for, being a ten-year loyal employee.
The one thing I would say, we've spoken to multiple school divisions about their salary structure for bus drivers, and it's handled multiple, multiple different ways, even in surrounding areas around us, and the paying varies wildly, it does. Um, but they're experiencing the same issues we are, even if they have structures similar to what you're describing. So I'm not saying that our drivers maybe do deserve some sort of longevity-type recognition, but that's probably not the cure for a lot of the shortages and things, if that's where you start to think about it. Solutions are definitely.
I don't think, I don't think anybody really has a solution for the bus driver shortage. I was recently in a um BSBA Board of Directors meeting and I was asking different people what their school systems were doing, and some of them were, basically they were getting rid of bus drivers and getting rid of positions and expanding their walking zones, things like that, that aren't an option to us.
Really?
And Alexandria City, they expanded all their walking zones up to a mile. So if you live within a mile of a school, you're walking. Um, you're walking in the rain, you know.
That, that, that could happen, expand the walking.
It could happen, it's few places.
Has anybody asked the bus drivers?
I mean, not as a group, but talked to a few, one retired, and he kind of reinforced what I think I already thought, which is, I'm not sure that it's pure pay, although if you increase the pay for any position, it'll attract, in theory, more people. I think from a budgetary standpoint, if we're gonna help our bus drivers out and attract more, we need to make the quality of life for the drivers a little bit easier. And that's, it's easier said than done, but, and we talked about aides and those, but that's filling positions, and you gotta, you gotta find a way to incentivize filling that, but having an aide, the only bus drivers that I've had a conversation with, if you talk to them about, hey, what if, what if you knew you were always going to have an aide to help handle disciplinary stuff, like, all of them report a smile on their face, because that makes their job a lot easier, they get to focus on what it is we're trying to get them to do. But again, I know sort of the aide on a bus is easier said than done, but it sounds to me like, just from this conversation, I mean, we might have to think hard about our base scale for, for maintenance, but that may not be exactly the same for our bus drivers. It's a little different.
I'm with Jonathan, I think some of the quality experience, workplace experience, I mean, I've talked about the air conditioning on the buses. Um, you know, that was one of the things that John and I heard on our, on bus tour the first day of school. And I know you were talking about possibly the new ones getting air conditioning on those. I'll keep going back to the idea of school Labor Day through Memorial Day.
I think it's, I think it's just, you know, it's a ten-month position, so even though our salary is very competitive for bus drivers, it is a ten-month position. So therefore, it's not, it's not, you're, you're pretty much committed to having another job.
You have to have another job because.
You have to have another job.
Even with the salary increase, you're making nineteen, you can't live off that. Maybe we should be offering them custodial positions. Uh, some, and I think in Covington, that did happen, this was misrepresented on Facebook, somebody said that the Covington City made their bus drivers be custodians, they chose to be because it was additional income. You know, you drop the bus, you do some, I think there was some maintenance kind of people, because you're having to do that if you were gonna be contributing to your family income.
It reflects, I mean, not all of our bus drivers, when I was a kid and years gone by, were farmers, but it, it does reflect, I mean, but yeah, but I, I remember, I had a bus driver who also worked a farm too, when he wasn't driving a bus, and for agricultural type of people, I mean, that's exactly, they, they had to.
It wasn't their primary job.
Right, 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 yeah. So we probably have overall less of those people than we did thirty years ago.
Correct.
So, and, and we haven't meaningfully changed the structure of the job.
That's also why we don't have volunteer rescue and fire and homeless, because we don't have people working on our houses.
Well, and to, to your point about mechanics and things, I mean, I know a little bit just from observing, firing in and hearing those conversations, a lot of the strain on volunteer fire departments has been the increased regulation by way of certifications that these volunteers have to have. Uh, and a lot, to a lot of people, that's just intimidating. There are a lot of folks that would serve, but they say, I just don't have the time to spend for that, so they don't because they're just already certified. And I think, you know, to Jacob's point earlier, like with a mechanic, with that position, uh, you know, our, our background check, our application process might be a touch more intimidating than whoever we're competing with. So that may factor into it for sure.
But I think we, we all know that it's a problem. We all get the text messages, we all realize what it is, we all hear it in the community. Um, I don't know what the solution is. I think part of the solution is paying the people while they're in training. Um, I think that is definitely something. I think that um getting people so that they do the, um, if they're on unemployment, they don't have to keep looking for a job if they're training, I think that's a big thing.
And we don't have to pay them the rate, you could pay them a minimum wage rate. There's nothing that says you can't do that. You could be a, a training wage, and that would be the only category to have a training wage. You wouldn't have to do the entire, um, whatever is there making, twenty-one dollars an hour.
I, I think we've got, we've just gotta figure out how we can get more people interested in training to come.
Can we simplify the application process, maybe, I mean, even if we have paper applications, um, you know, some people find the online application chat, and I know that that suggests, well, you know, that's a screening mechanism, but we're not in a position to be able to screen too hard. I mean, I, I had several people who, they wanted substitutes, and that, and that, they just had so much difficulty getting work in that system.
I would encourage anyone who's having that difficulty to contact us directly. It is not uncommon for us to sit down with an applicant and help them submit their applications.
But see, just getting word out on that is the thing, because they don't, while we might know this in this circle, they, they don't know that.
If it's cars like the drivers during training, well, we could, if those, they pass their background checks, could we make them bus attendants?
Yeah.
That'd be, that helps a lot, because they're working out, so you got subs and that, that's a big help.
And we do attempt to do that, but usually the background checks come in and coincide pretty much with when they're completing their training. It's a linked process.
Well, you gotta consider the safety of children, go back.
Thanks to a lot of people, that's saving us for, for driving a bus, none of them, never says anything about the pay. It's the kids.
It is, it's behavior. I, I did a ride along with Tammy Preston, she does WRE, and we just rode from, from Mountain View to the church in, what, this right on the corner?
Yeah.
And they, they were not, and I, I was her bus attendant, so after the first ride, I, they were listening to me, but I'd be my best attendant too if I was driving Marie. And, and Tammy, she's a really sweet person, and she was trying, yeah, we're gonna sing a song. Okay, we're gonna sing a song, but y'all are gonna sit down, you'll sing, and she's here, and, and bus drivers don't have time to do that.
Well, that's, that's what I, I mean, just the handful or less that I've even talked to, one of which was a retired bus driver, but that, that comes up a lot, you know, just the challenging disciplinary environment, and I'm, I don't wanna make too much of it, I don't think, I don't think kids today are grimms and never listen to anything, but um, I do think that bus drivers today in twenty twenty-four probably feel like they have less options and will be judged more harshly than thirty-five, forty years ago.
Oh, for sure.
And I'm sure the Mountain View kids were, were there easier to manage than the middle school kids. I think high school kids are probably, they're probably all right. The middle school kids are very challenging. I had a bus driver tell me that. She was really upset, you know? So, I think how we manage behaviors, kids that ride the bus, do they, do their parents have to sign something with, about behaviors and that kind of thing?
Everyone has to agree with code of conduct across the board, basically. Um, you know, and that can sometimes, sometimes be a good deterrent for, for students, or good tool in disciplinary conference. Um, you know, a big piece of it, I think, is just that, you know, it's a, it's not the, the riding on the bus is not like classroom, right, where we're all doing our work, right? Kids essentially have some free time, and that is more challenging to manage. Um, as we're talking through this, it brings up a question that I'd love to ask Eric. Eric, approximately how many routes are there, say elementary side? And I know that's hard to determine right now because we change them a lot to keep them running, so I don't, I don't want the question to be unfair.
If, if we were able to run in a perfect world, I believe the amount of routes that we would be running today would be around four to three, which we've not been able to do for more than three years now, really, because of employee shortages. And so the reality is, we're running routes that are combined, which push ridership numbers to reform buses, which makes it really hard to even come up with solutions for them going to alternate stops or anything like that, which sounds like an easy fix, but there just literally isn't room on a lot of the buses.
So, so back to kind of, back to a specific question, like, would you perceive, would you perceive more free time on the bus being the difficulty or crowdedness on the bus?
Oh, it's a combination of both.
Okay, alright, great.
Yes, yeah. And you add into that fact that many of the routes are longer now, because we're combining and absorbing routes, the students are spending more time on the bus.
Just because we're operating under less than ideal conditions, right? But they, they really are airing on trying to keep those buses on the road, which I think everybody is, you know, excited about, and we're able to do that, but it creates some challenging issues.
So how do we enforce that?
That, that is a really great question for any of the principals, but without them in the room, I'd say I'd defer to Fred to really explain how that happens in the day-to-day operations of school.
Um, bus drivers would report any kind of disciplinary issues to their, to principals, to where they are delivering students, and then the administration of the buildings would take over from there and review the, the referrals and then take appropriate disciplinary action, whatever it may be, so.
But can you take a stab, I know it's kind of off the top of your head, you got any idea what percentage of your referrals or what percentage of referrals are from the buses?
The principals or you?
That would be, yeah, that would be a.
Principal.
Yeah, that'd be a pretty significant, uh, guess on my part. Uh, the significant cases that come to be, not as many, a few, and, but it's, it's, I think as a bus driver, part of the, it is managing the students, but you also are focusing here on the road and then safety.
Distressful, distressful.
Which is pretty distressful.
I've, I've ridden with two children that were out of control. And that's not fun.
Can we see all the buses that I'm told that we're looking at?
We're doing an evaluation right now, actually, just getting started and going through, and so most of our buses have, all of our buses have campuses of one generation or down. So we have three different systems. One of those has two generations on it, the oldest of which is the one that's the most probably bad. As we all know, electronics age out quickly, but our buses remain in our fleet for fifteen years. And so therein lies the problem, we have older buses that are ready to age out of the fleet, that have basically, pretty much obsolete equipment, and the equip, equipment to replace and repair is very, very limited or unavailable a lot of the time. So what we're doing right now is trying to evaluate and find the ones that we're having problems with, go back to our spare fleet, because we have a good bit of depth in spares. We have spares that we keep ready to go at a moment's notice, and then a little bit more depth, and we're going back to those buses and looking for that equipment to see if we can get these other systems operating with equipment we have on hand, because it's just not fiscally responsible to spend, you know, eight to fifteen thousand dollars to outfit a bus that's gonna be out of the fleet in one to three years.
Well, here's where I'm going with that. How many buses we're, forty routes, you say forty routes?
Forty-some routes. We probably actually have a fleet of buses that's closer to number sixty.
But if we could, instead of getting that many bus eights to ride, if we had a central monitor, a bus monitor, that those monitors are every screen, I'm thinking outside the box, that says, is it two-way communication or just one-way?
No, no, these are generally hard drives that are mounted on the bus that record what's going on on the bus.
You have to get it out.
Yes, yes. Uh, there are systems that can transmit that data to the school once you arrive on site, but that's another even level of equipment.
But don't help for the driver in route?
No, not in route.
Not that we, because any, anything that you do to do that would require telephone or just cellular transmission, it would be problematic, obviously in certain areas of the county, they, they just lose connection too.
But if the kids and people were watching that, call them out there, and then the driver could put more attention on the road. Years ago, it was a million years ago, and I'm the oldest person in this room, we used to have safety patrolmen, they were students that did that. Has anything like that ever been done? They, they would actually be school crossing, you know, they'd have some little bag, you know, a little belt, whatever, and on the buses, they would keep order. They would call mine. I know that's a long time ago, but that would be an unpaid position, and it might create some mentoring kind of things or something like that.
Part of the issues with that is, you know, they're, they're students and they're required to remain seated on the bus while the bus is in motion as well. Because I, I can remember very similar things going on when I was in school. We had basically a, an individual amongst our peers that helped monitor the bus, and they would actually get up and walk the aisle back in maybe years ago days, but, you know, we can't do that today.
Good point on the aisle.
Well, they can't move, maybe they won't be able to move around, but I don't know, maybe some sort of a club on, some sort of safety kind of thing, you know?
Interesting idea.
Typically, most school bus misbeh, misbehavior, the kids are punished, but it's really only punishment to the parents, because then the kids get driven to school by the parents.
Yeah.
That makes life easier.
When it goes that far, yes, that could, could be viewed that way, but so.
I know, whatever, I, I know, not that I would ever get kicked off the bus.
You ever be kicked off the bus?
Uh, yes.
I would say our administrators are very, pretty much in favor of trying to keep the students on the bus to come to school. Um, and, but when safety warrants the removal of the student, they're left with no option. You know, when it's a safety issue, that's when they will take action and remove them from the bus.
We have to, we have to take the special needs cases to school right now.
That is correct.
We don't have to ever, so maybe if we got a little more tough love on the buses and say, parent, this is the rules, if your kid don't listen, then you drive.
So, so my thing is, I think, I think that if you ask somebody out in public who has a CDL, they say, well, I wouldn't do it because of the kids, you know, the kids are all disbehaving, but I think if you actually ask the bus drivers, the ones I've talked to, they don't say that as much about the kids.
They do it for the kids, a lot of them.
I think, so I think there's a little bit of.
The drivers, they're.
I, I know one in particular that said she did do it. I, I know one in particular that said she did do it because of the kids. She's a middle school kid, stuck his, sticking his head out the window and she was on the end, she had to pull over. Yeah, there's, there's some misbehavior happening. We can't negate that.
Well, I think the main thing is, if you were, just like we were kind of joking about earlier, I mean, if you're charged with safely transporting a large vehicle down the road and you must also manage discipline for thirty-plus children sitting behind you...
Sure, we got seventy-eight passenger buses.
Nobody, you know, not a lot of people are gonna listen to that scenario and say, that is the job I've always dreamed of. What you find is, a lot of school bus drivers, they, they like what they do, they like even interacting with the kids, you know, but they're, they're just kind of scraping by with what they can tolerate, depending upon, because we know, like, a given bus driver may settle into a year, they may have a wonderful group of kids, and it might be the greatest year ever, and then next year, that's not quite the same. So not every one of our bus drivers has the exact same experience, I would say. Some, some of them are probably, you know, pretty okay with how things are, others, you know, are probably, you know, screaming at Eric every day for hell's sake.
I think that's a very accurate...